Any of the rest of y'all had college students calling you up, asking you a bunch of questions about the downtown? I've had two of them. That's a city problem, but I'll give you my opinion what the city needs to do.
Our students?
Yeah.
I think they're doing a research thing on one of the classes or whatnot, if I'm not mistaken.
I have, one of them was my son, the other one was some other person, some female. I told them restaurants, restaurants, more restaurants, occasional boutique and antique store.
Well, like me with like a winery too.
Yeah, but that wouldn't hurt. Of course, you got nice porch overlooking the vineyards downtown.
I appreciate it.
Well, good evening, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Union County Council. It is now 5:30 on March the 11th. I'll ask everybody to please stand. Have an invocation by Chaplain Danny Wright, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Vice Chair David Sinclair.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another great day in this great county, Lord. We just thank you so much for blessing us to be allowed to serve in this county, Lord. I thank you so much for your love for us, for the gift of eternal life through Christ, Lord. We thank you so much, we thank you for grace and mercy. We pray that you ask, that you lead and guide us in this meeting tonight as we make decisions for our county. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. All right, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now turn the meeting over to the clerk for the roll call.
District one, Danny Wright.
Present.
District two, John Glenn.
Present.
District three, David Sinclair.
Present.
District four, Amy Smith.
Present.
District five, Carolyn Rutherford.
Present.
District six, John Flood.
Present.
Okay. Everybody was sent a copy of the minutes from February the 11th meeting. Were there, did you find any additions, deletions, or amendments to these minutes?
I made a motion that we accept them as written.
Second, I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair, accept as written, second by Councilman Flood. Any questions? All council in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And the minutes are approved. I have one certificate of appreciation for your service, and this award goes to Ms. Allison Wentz of our detention center for 10 years of loyal and dedicated service. We'll make sure she gets that. Okay, the next item we have on our agenda, and I know we have been meeting in 103 over the past month, and we never formally made a vote to move our meetings to 103 West Main Street, all future council meetings and other activities. But specifically the council meeting, since we have those advertised online, and as well we have them put out on our website and on Facebook. So with that said, can I have a motion to relocate all of our council meetings from this point forward to 103 West Main?
Motion to do so.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood, I have a second from Councilperson Rutherford. Are there any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. So now I'd like to make an introduction. This is Mr. Steve Knight with Fitch and Associates. They are a contractor that was brought in, they actually started working in end of January, and their goal is to work with our fire service to determine what could be a potential plan for the fire services' future. And with that, Steve, thank you for coming and being with us this morning, and go right ahead, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. And good evening, nice to meet you. Again, thank you for the introduction, my name is Steve Knight, I'm a partner with Fitch and Associates. Fitch and Associates has been around for 40 years now, is a public safety consulting firm, and I live over in Nashville, as the chairman mentioned, so it's nice to not have to hop on a plane for a change, so I appreciate that. A little bit about our, our study and the way it was framed, with the chair's robust background, he asked all the right questions. So we put together a fire and EMS comprehensive master plan, which will really look at all of the ins and outs of both the fire and the EMS service deliveries for the county, which will include all the operational aspects, fiscal analyses, looking at the capital response time, how many times, you know, simultaneous events occur, occur, how reliable the system is, what's the level of participation with the different independent companies, or, you know, volunteerism, all those aspects that kind of come into the model that you have. So we'll do a robust, very data-driven, and I'll come back to that in a minute, but a very data-driven, objective approach, so that we can remove the emotion and the bias that sometimes can occur when you have a lot of competing interests, when you look at systems that are similar in design as this. We also like to make sure that in this process, it's highly transparent. So we've already met with a lot of your county departments on our first visit, we met with the Fire Chiefs Association, and we sent out a data request from all the, all the, you know, the individual fire chiefs, they're working on that, I've gotten a couple in so far, so we're, we're moving forward with that piece, so that we can see all the EMS data and all the fire data and kind of merge that together to try to help, you know, make sense of that. So that level of transparency is really going to be vital to the success of finding any common ground for implementation, so that's a big piece of what we do, and that transparency is anchored in the data, right? So that we can all have a common understanding of what the data is saying, we can have confidence in the data, and then if we have to have any disagreement or negotiation over what the data means, then we'll address that at a later time, but at least a foundational, you know, information that everybody can kind of agree on and coalesce around. So overall, we also like to frame out for you as a policy group, we like to build alternatives, we like to, you know, kind of think of them at the goalposts, if you will. Some firms will come in and say, this is, you must do X, you must do Y, and you only have one solution, which creates kind of a zero-sum policy discourse for you. What we like to do, as long as it's acceptable with you, is we design alternatives, and we give you the pros, cons, any barriers to implementation, and the costs associated with each of those alternatives. That gives you, as a board, a little greater flexibility to navigate those competing interests, costs, you know, how you move from point A to point B, and we'll certainly build it all out with short-term, midterm, and long-term goals associated with the costs and the milestones associated with it. So again, the chair put together a good request, we're happy to be able to partner with you on this, and I think you'll, you'll see a very good product at the end, and there'll be a lot of transparency and interaction from here until we get to the finish line. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
And just to review, this is, they're going to take a look at our current county wide fire service, evaluate it, evaluate with emergency medical as well, just because if you ever go down the road, if there's ever thought of going down the road to a full, full-time county department, well naturally you would think those personnel would be augmenting and assisting EMS, which is the scope of the way things are done today. I know I say this, but you, you think about Johnny and Roy on Emergency 51, we're doing this back in the early 70s, so it's not anything foreign or new. And this is just information and, and proposed plans for us. Nobody has made any prior commitments or discussions, matter of fact, I've told Steve, please, you go let the report generate what the report has to be, has to be said, and then that report will be reported back to council from them. And matter of fact, I actually asked Mr. Knight, if he didn't mind, to actually get your contact information, which he does have your email addresses to reach out to y'all, and take any information that you may have. This isn't Philip Russell's plan, it's not just my plan, it's all of Union County's plan. We wouldn't be here today if we didn't realize that all of our volunteer departments are coming to us saying, we don't have people, we can't get people, we're not having volunteers. Well, we can strike at this a whole bunch of different ways, but I really believe somebody who's in the business of setting up these new business concepts, if you will, and it would be a new business concept to the way Union County's currently doing it, that we have a data-driven approach to that, and some options that this body would be able to make a decision. I don't make those decisions unless there's a tie, this has got to be something that, that y'all have ownership in as well, wants to report on.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
I sure will. Okay, so we'll move to our next, and it is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, title nine of the Union County Code of Ordinances in limited regard and particulars only regarding boards and commissions. Y'all have actually seen this document before, and I have a couple of concerns over it, even though I've read it again, and I think maybe even Councilman Wright, you and I may want to look at this as too. I know this is first reading, but as we're going, if y'all have read through this, if there's any additions or adjustments that y'all want to make in it, I'm completely fine to do so. But what this does is, is, we've been working on this board and commissions now for almost two years, trying to get it where it was out of the 1980s, and it represents what we were doing and how we were doing it. It does away with a few boards, it does away with the stadium board, it will actually do away with the alcohol and drug abuse board, but the alcohol, drug abuse through this, that we would be able to research with state deodas as to who could partner, or how alcohol and drug could function and operate on their own, and not be under the umbrella of the county government. Also, the tourism is in there, the tourism committee would be abolished for Union County Council to establish a, a tax committee or accommodations and hospitality, a tax committee that would actually make presentations to council on how these funds would be spent, so that council has input. The last biggest change is to, we're not going to get rid of the fair board, the fair board would still be appointed, but what we will do is, is get rid of the fair board as it stands now, we will create them into a 501(c)(3), then as a county, what we will do is perform a long-term lease to the fair board of that properties, so they can begin to utilize that property, they can insure that property, they can create their own policies of that property, and maintain it, and this actually saves a good bit of liability out from underneath county operations. Understand there are very few counties our size that still has a fair ground, and I think all of our counties loves a fair, I enjoy going to it every fall. But in order for us to do this, and continue doing it, and allowing the fair board to do what it's supposed to do legally, then this is the option we have to do. A lot of these committees, we had, the staff person was hired by the committee, and we found that to be not legal practice in today's world. These boards and commissions are advisory in nature, council makes the decision on the, the funding and the policies and the wherewithals, at the end of the day, those lawsuits still fall back on us, so that these bodies should not be hiring their own supervisor, or their own manager, or their executive director, unless they are a separate entity such as the fair board's a 501(c)(3). So that's what we tried to go in and address and clean this up to where it looks nice. This is only first reading, and we've got other opportunities here to make changes if you'd like to do so.
I've read, read through the ordinance, saying I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to include a declaration of protective covenants clause, that basically would state that should, should the, should the, the, nevermind, that was the wrong ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wrong ordinance!
I got you, I got you, hold on, that's the next one, I got you, got you, got you.
Well, if I take that first paragraph, kind of makes caring what?
It, it does, but I wanted to make sure.
I'll read over some more.
Dude, if you.
Yeah, but I think that covers what I was looking for.
Adam looked at this, I looked at it with Adam, we were trying to do it in as at least words as possible.
Yeah.
But it was, I wanted to make sure that the points you made, which were good points, were covered.
The only thing I was concerned about with that particular ordinance at all was the, how the fair board would be handled, because I was scared that, I mean, the goal of council has always been to utilize the fair ground more times than it was getting utilized.
Right.
So I was just wanting to make sure that, you know, should we lease it to them, are they, are they still going to make it available for projects like that?
I think what you're going to see is, is I think more usage from the fair board, because at this point in time, when we do a long-term lease, they can use this property as they deem necessary. So there could be use that they're able to do with this, we could still appoint the board, and that was still the, the structure that we will have even as a 501(c)(3). It would state that council would appoint the board, but we would do a long-term lease, they could go and hire an executive director and manage the day-to-day operations of that fairgrounds. Now, it's not going to totally protect Union County, but it does save a zero off the check. So with those explanations, do I have a motion to accept first reading of this document?
I'd say first reading.
I have a motion from Councilperson Smith.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vice Chair Sinclair. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And the ayes have it. The next is third and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain Union County-owned real property, which is 322 East Main Street, to the Union Lawrence Commission on Higher Education. In front of you, in front of council, you will see both a purchasing agreement, and you will see an ordinance. There has been a revision placed in the ordinance, it was going to go into the deed, and I knew council wanted this in the actual ordinance and, and sale agreement, so we had that added. And what it does is place a restrictive ordinance, or restricted covenants on the property, that it can only be used for the purpose of education by USC Union, and the period on these covenants by state law is 50 years. So, any, or, or is there, I have a motion?
So we don't need to?
Yeah, I'd go ahead, I'd go ahead and do yours, to make sure we're covering.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion now to amend that ordinance to include a declaration of protective covenants clause that Philip just mentioned.
I'll second it. I have a motion by, by Vice Chair Sinclair, second by Councilman Flood. Now, are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And also, please be advised and notice that Councilperson Smith recused herself from this issue and did not, but, so, I don't know that we have any committee reports, I don't know that we've had any committee meetings.
Yeah, we did.
Huh?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, I get, we did, didn't we? I'm sorry, finance met, I apologize.
The administrative committee has continued discussion about potentially a change in form of government. So, we'll meet again.
Okay. Well, to add to the call for committee and to that, to that point of the finance and administrative committee, in your supervisor's report, which I'll go to in a minute, and it will be followed up by an email calendar. I have the proposed council presentation dates, I put that in the supervisor's report, we, again, as I said, we will follow up with a calendar invite, March, or excuse, yeah, Tuesday, March 25th, I will present you my budget for your consideration. April the 1st, we may not have to have that meeting, and I actually have it starred, I'm working with all of our elected officials, they have, we've all been working really well together, I haven't seen any requests that we are not going to be able to meet, I don't believe it this time, and I've had every, I've asked every council, every elected official this, if, if we are able to give you what you want, do you need to come and make a presentation to council? They were like, absolutely not. So I don't know if that means they're scared of you or what. But Tuesday will be the first reading of the budget, the reason for March the 25th is so I can give you hard numbers, so you feel comfortable having a, a first reading. April the 22nd would be outside agencies, Tuesday, April 29th would be a budget work section. If needed, we also would have May 6th as a work session, Tuesday, May the 13th, we would have a second reading, and if needed, we would have Tuesday, May 20th as another work session. I don't know that we will need all of that, but I just wanted to get it out there to you, and the final, the public hearing and final reading on that will be Tuesday, June the 17th. So, and we'll get that out to you.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I am totally unavailable on March 25th.
March 25th. We can move that out a week if you would like. Why don't we try it for?
April Fool's Day?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
Is everybody else fine with that, and we just move everything out?
To what date?
To April the 1st, so we'll scratch March 25. And I'll just have our elected officials there that night too, so if we have any other in-depth conversation, we can knock two out at one, because it typically does not take that long. Okay? And that actually gives me another week to plan, if y'all don't mind that, I'm very appreciative of that.
Are you planning to email us your proposed budget before you present it on April 1?
Well, I can, I wasn't planning on it, but I can, I'm not, I'm not hiding anything, it was just to get, you know, it may be that day of, because I, I know that even last year when we did this, it was the 11th hour when I was finishing up the PowerPoint, but, you know, it, that's a lot of data to gather in when you begin to look at $26 million, but, you know, yeah, I, I can get that to you if y'all would like to have it in advance, we will have workbooks made for all of y'all too, then. All right, supervisor's report, there's a lot going on, I'm gonna hit the highlights, but I'm really gonna jump on our project some. We are below budget, our budget currently is 62%, we should be at 66.7 based on the calendar year goes. I realize there's a 13th month in here, but we're, we're running 1.16 below budget as we stand right now in millions, in a million dollars, so we're a million dollars, just a little over a million dollars under budget right now. I don't see that's going to change, but again, anything can happen, we've had Hurricane Helene come in before, you know, so, and believe it or not, that has not affected us too bad in our budget. We are down to 56 dogs as of today in our, our shelter, we actually had a good number of that above, we have been working with some rescues, they came in, they helped out, we've had a few court cases that have been taken care of, so we've been able to release some dogs that were on hold for criminal cases. So that, that's a positive note. I do know that our EMS, and I do want to talk about them just for a second, even though Chief Harold's in here, and I'm doing this not because he's in here, but because I had this flagged, there were only 28 days in the month of February, and they almost ran as many calls in February as they ran in January. Call volume's really going up, I'd urge for y'all just to flip through and take a look at, at the calls that they run, they ran about seven or eight calls more than 20. They ran about seven or eight calls more than 20 a day, that's getting concerning with only three ambulances, so it's just something for y'all to think about. 911 calls as a whole are going up, and of course, I gotta give props to our maintenance staff, they're doing a wonderful job. As a matter of fact, above our picture, we had another little water incident this past week, and just this morning, or actually yesterday, and this morning, that wall was repaired, and the picture's put back up by our maintenance staff, who did a great job. That took some work to do what they were doing. Hitting the additional projects, which I know that we have a tremendous amount of special projects going on. The jail addition, we are literally within days away of being able to schedule a final CO inspection. All the vendors have been in testing all of their computer datas, all their telephones, all the camera systems, all of the data required, they've been involved in doing that, so we're looking for this to be scheduled. I'm hoping this Thursday at 2:30 in a meeting I have, maybe the next week, but the goal is, is for us to have a CO and then plan open house. I want y'all to go see it, it is a gorgeous facility. Selling and donation of property, we've been working on two parcels of property we wanted to sell. I was trying to do this together, because we're going to get the, use the facility of somebody who actually sells property, a broker, instead of auctioning the property. 501 Flat Drive is one, the other is property at 193 Lover's Lane Road, or 163 Lover's Lane Road. FAA has balked at us selling that property right now, so what I'm doing is, is working both with, back with our engineer and architect, who worked on this original program some seven, eight years ago, when this property was purchased, as well as even going through Ralph Norman's office to help, ask for help with a little bit of FAA assistance, because they're just not wanting to give, and Union County's got a house and a building sitting on a .93 acre piece of property that really, we don't need to be in the rental business, we need to get rid of it. Of course, you did see the boards and commissions, we talked about it earlier tonight, but we will go ahead and appoint the rest of our boards next month. We have done the advertisement, that was on me, I thought we would be further along ahead in this process than we were, but we want to get, we need to go ahead and get all of these board members taken care of, so it'll take probably about 10 or 15 minutes longer than normal as far as council meeting goes, but we'll get all of our boards appointed as we see fit, and hopefully we've got a lot of good applicants. Still waiting on the governor's office on Spartanburg County, Union County line. Buffalo Mill update, you're getting ready to have the COGS send out public meetings for both the dry cleaners and the mill property. These are, they may not be done at the same time, so that we can keep the meeting separate, but it is a way for people to come and talk to DHEC about any concerns they may have about the cleanup that's going to happen. Mill pond, we're still waiting on Army Corps Engineer. Gateway signs, we found some quality control issues on one this week, we're working on that, it should be repaired quick, and we're still pending the battery packs for the solar lighting. Disc golf course, we're waiting on either FEMA reimbursement or identification of funds, and if I need funds, I will come to y'all and ask for that, pending the FEMA funds coming in. But we know that this is going to be funded to a certain degree by FEMA to have that entire disc golf course completely graded back out like it was before Helene dumped all the storms. Wallace Thompson Hospital property, we've actually met with a, with three people, y'all are aware of one meeting, and that presentation they provided last week, two weeks ago, we met with the Department of Mental Health, they love the building. This week, we actually met with a developer who loves the building for university housing or public housing, especially with the ball field across the street, and the new dog park is getting put in by, and I'm expecting a proposal from them. So, what I will tell, what I, our staff have told everybody they meet with, the decision's up to council. So what we will do is, is continue working with them, set up a benchmark with them, and then let them come and make a presentation. One thing about a developer getting it is, they're going to pay cash for it, or they're going to pay us funds for it, and it goes back on the tax books at that rate, and they're going to turn around and make money off of that for public housing that may be able to be used for the university students, so it could be a win-win all the way around. Bankruptcy court did give us $100,000 to use to offset utility cost, and I'm waiting on a short-term lease to sign, so I can have the utilities changing our name. We're already responsible for the utilities, the city's being very, very gracious to us, so if you happen to see a member of city council, tell them thank you for working with us. But we're working hard on that. Maintenance shop, for the joint city-county maintenance shop, it should go out to bid in the next few weeks. We have approved all of the plans, it's really looking good, that is going to be a great facility for both the city and the county. New animal shelter, we just finished the topo survey of that, it's all been sent to our engineer and architect, so we're hoping to have some type of cost estimate shortly. I think, again, it's going to put us between a three and three and a half million dollar range for this. Templeton Sports Complex, really excited about that, over 650 surveys, still have input coming in, so that's a good thing. The majority of what everybody said, they wanted that large building to be used for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, walking trails in inclement weather, gymnastics, cheer competitions, there were a lot of things that said that they would like to be able to use this large, open area building for. Of course, there was a lot of comments wanting things on the outside too, soccer and football fields, tennis courts, basketball courts. The one thing that I did get out of that, and I think y'all did, and it's been our, I think our mission as council, that this was going to be a park that everybody could use. So, that was the main concept we wanted to get out of this, is make it a sports avenue for all of our citizens to use. And I'm getting positives coming back with that. What's the next step? The next step is architect and engineers are going to go work on a conceptual plan. We are doing a survey of that property, I do have the articles of property transfer on my desk, we've approved those, I've issued a go-ahead on that, on that document, but part of that document is, we have a couple of things that we have to do. One of those is a Phase 1 environmental to protect ourselves, even though nothing's been on that building, and a survey. I'm gonna go ahead and do the two topo survey while I do the survey, there's no sense in surveying it twice or paying to have it done, let's go ahead and get them both done. And then once, once the environmental and the survey is done, we should be ready to move to closing. The historic jail building, I know Carlisle Associates, I'm waiting on something from them. Recycling centers, everybody knows Bonham is complete, John Hart is next, and we have been working with our contractor to grade and stump the property. So, we've come a long way from there, we do have the, we've seen a draft engineering plan, we've got a grading plan that they provided to us, so we can go ahead and start the grading. We should start physical construction, I would say sometime in June, as soon as it starts getting dry. But even, even at June, we probably will not be through with finished grading until, and finished with the project until December or January of next year. We are going to multi-stage this, so that the boxes are below, where you can back up and not have to, have to throw things over the top of a C and D box. So, we're trying to accommodate that in the engineering, and that may slow a little construction down. The next one we have is going to be Jonesville, and we have money allocated in our proposed budget that you will see this coming April 1st, that will actually have the, we're going to have to have that building environmentally tested for lead-based, for paint, for asbestos, so we've got to go through that Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that building, and in abatement, we will have Phase 1, Phase 2 evaluations in that budget for that. May not abatement yet, because we know that's going to run the price up, and I don't know that I'm going to be able to do that this year, but at least next year we'll be able, we will have some of this out of the way, and we'll be able to move forward next year and get that building poured out, so we can advance the Jonesville part. So that, that really, that wraps us up of where we are at. I think staff's doing a fantastic job for Union County, and we did do 66 building permits this month, so that ends the supervisor's report. Any questions, have they? Hearing none, we're at the end of our agenda. So, do I have a, do I have any announcements from anybody, or anything going on in your areas that you want to talk about?
Since you talked about the Jonesville, you probably don't, just don't realize it, I'm sure. Michael don't realize the fences fail on the backside. I think we can prepare, just be, we stood back up.
Really? On the backside of it? Thanks for letting me know. Well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion second.
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, ladies first, I'm gonna give Ms. Smith the motion, and Ms. Rutherford the second, and if y'all all agree, please stand up.